Call to order and reporting of members present and absent.
Barton.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Pinkleton.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public D.U. in the office of the superintendent.
Item number three, consent agenda. All the following items concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussions, consideration, and approval of the following. Are there any additional items of new business to be reviewed?
There are none.
Minutes on the March fourth, two thousand twenty-four regular board meeting and the March thirteenth special board meeting. Approval of financial report, approval of the extra duty assignment schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and to declare the following items as surplus.
Okay, we'll look at agenda item three point two. Have two minutes from the March fourth to March thirteenth meetings that I did not see errors with. Give you a moment to review those. Agenda item three point three, have our finance report. If you will open up that top attachment, you will see our current chargeables for the year. And so we are still down in our gross production, motor vehicle, and REA, but we are over collecting in our land earnings and county four mill as compared to last year. So when you go to the second page, you can see graphically what I'll tell you about on this third and fourth page. When you look at comparison from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, our revenue over the past two months has actually increased, so we've collected four hundred and forty-four thousand more than we did last year, but our expenses have also increased nine hundred and two thousand. Okay? So we are, we are collecting more than we did last year, but we're also spending more than we did last year. And part of that's going to be your teacher pay raise, increasing utilities, and so forth. Okay? Our extra duty assignment schedule, three point four, there are no changes to that. Three point five, activity fund report. Think we may have copies of that. Is that right, Terry?
Um, check and see if they, I attached them, but it was late, so see if they show up. Refresh yours, maybe.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Three point five, activity fund report. If you'll look at, open up the top attachment. Top attachment is going to be the month of March. All of our activity accounts are in good standing. If you look, look at the bottom attachment or the second attachment, it's our year-to-date. And again, all activity accounts are in good standing. Want to recognize Ms. Hall, she does a great job of working with all of our sponsors, all of our coaches, to really ensure that procedures are followed with our activity accounts. Does a good job. It's a big job, and she does a good job with that. Agenda item three point six, our activity fundraisers. They're part of none this month. Agenda item three point seven, we have a couple of interaccount transfers. If you'll open the top attachment first, you'll see an interaccount transfer from our concession account to the high school baseball account for six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This is pretty routine that we do each year. They purchase the remaining supplies after basketball season is over. If you'll look at the second attachment, we have our concession distribution. And so these are the concession distribution amongst all groups that work concession stands at cross-country softball and basketball. Last year, we did a sixty percent distribution. We're doing the same sixty percent distribution this year. That forty percent that we leave over allows for a healthy startup to begin our next school year. And you can see the distribution among each one of the classes and groups that work those concessions. Want to thank Ms. Tyree, again, Ms. Hall, Coach Foster. A lot of work goes into assigning and getting these concession stand workers filled, everything received and turned in. And so really appreciate the work that they've done to make this distribution really easy and a, and a good fundraiser for these classes and these groups. Okay, agenda item three point three, have our child nutrition report. Again, this is a, um, covers a couple of different years. If you will look at March, you can see that we are down in both lunch and breakfast. Keep in mind, we're a week shorter because of spring break. Okay? So really serving about the same amount of breakfast and lunch meals that we are year-to-date. We'll be sending out a survey at the end of the year, provided by Keystone, to get some feedback from our parents on how meals are going. And so that will be coming out in the, in the coming weeks.
How are we doing, Mr. Argyle, about, um, fund balances, like unpaid child balances? Are we, do we have a need?
Yes, we always have a need. Um, there's always unpaid balances. Um, our community does a great job. Each year at the end of the year, we have many organizations that come in and donate towards unpaid balances. Uh, our secretaries and principals do a great job of trying to stay on top of those. Um, we ask folks, you don't have to completely pay your balance down. You just want to pay something towards your balance. Um, we also encourage folks that have those high balances to complete the free introduced lunch application so that we can get them qualified.
Can they do that mid-year?
Mm-hmm. But that's always a, there, there will always be unpaid balances.
Do we might want to draw some attention to that, that people would like to give to that? Would they come to the main office to do it?
So, yeah, everyone comes to the main office to, to put that money. Mrs. Hall handles all the deposits with our, with our child nutrition.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And agenda item three point nine, there are no items of surplus. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? There are none. I've recommended it's approved.
Okay, motion? Motion to approve three point one to three point nine is presented.
I second it.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year twenty-four. Four point one, the general fund as referenced, and the four point two, general fund as referenced.
Okay, so look at our building for our general fund, excuse me, the top attachment. If you'll open that up, and I'll go through a couple of purchase orders, draw your attention to purchase order number four sixty with Compass Athletics, two thousand four hundred and ten. These are to purchase soccer sweats and warmups for our student athletes. Um, these will be checked in each year, just like we did with our track a few years ago. The weather that our soccer athletes this time of year participate in, they need sweats, and they need sweatshirts. And so we will be purchasing those. Uh, purchase order number four sixty-four, four thousand nine hundred, with Peak Environment, is for spring spraying at all of our sites. Purchase order number four sixty-five, our in trust card travel expenses, for four thousand dollars. That's a blanket purchase order when our, when our Ag students start participating in all of their events this summer. This covers those travel fees for that. Of course, purchase order number four seventy-six, Maryfield's Office Supply, seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-two fifty. Um, this was referenced in last month's meeting about purchasing a floor cover for our gymnasium. And so we'll be doing that to have graduation. We will have prom in there also. Then purchase orders number four seventy-one, four seventy-seven, and four seventy-eight, all pertaining to transportation, uh, fixes, repairs, uh, to our buses, whether it's through R and T Diesel, K and S type. Any questions about general fund purchase order before we move on to payroll?
I appreciate a lot, but I just wonder that being purchased local before covering.
I think it's gonna be a really good thing for us.
Appreciate that. And the effort to do that locally.
Okay, if you look at the general fund purchase order for payroll expenses, these are all substitute teachers. If you'll look at the second agenda item for building fund, just a couple of purchase orders to go over with you there. Purchase order number sixty-one with Coverall. This is to strip and refinish the floors. Uh, it's twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty. We had anticipated, uh, trying to do this over spring break. They were not able to fit us in, so this will be a summer job. Um, what we've done with this in the past is we had, uh, Washington and Lincoln did that this summer, really brightened up their floors. I think Ms. Webster and, um, Mrs. Williams can attest to the difference that that made in, at their sites. And so it also helped their custodians, um, prepare for the school year. Uh, so our plan was to rotate this through each year, um, to give those custodians a little more time to do other things while the floors were completed and finished. And so, uh, this summer, they will come up here and strip and refinish the floors, uh, for the high school custodians so they can do some other maintenance around the building. Purchase order number sixty-three with Grey Dog Mechanical, three thousand five hundred. That's a new compressor, uh, for a unit, uh, to Washington Special Education Room. And then purchase order number sixty-four, uh, this was also discussed at last month's meeting, also met with Ms. McDermott, Mr. Hanson, and Mr. Blocker, and Mr. Mulley, um, to go over kind of their vision for the Ag farm, um, and this, uh, hog barn breeding facility. And so that was a very productive meeting. Um, appreciate Mr. Hanson and Ms. McDermott being involved in that. And so this is the purchase order to begin that process for fifty-three thousand one hundred through Erickson Steed. Any questions regarding any of the building fund purchase orders?
That was a really good meeting. Thank you for setting that up. It was, um, they had a really good report, a really good vision of where they want to go. Most of it's not within this easy-to-do-quickly-type stuff. We're within that range, range where we can do that. But it was really good. They're hardworking, um, have some really wonderful ideas to help kids in the agricultural settings. So it was a good meeting.
My concern for, for that structure is that we're just getting what's needed. I mean, did you guys walk away with that, with that feeling that we're getting what's needed for what they want to do?
They, uh, they, they have a lot more than just what's needed in their vision. Um, they, uh, I appreciate you saying that, but they do have a nice, uh, plans for, for a goat, a sheep barn, which is down there on the bottom level.
So this is like a phase one?
This is very much a phase one. The rest of it may be needed to be included in some long-term type funding, uh, that we'll do later, hopefully, but, um...
This was both the most value-oriented and the highest need based off of their priority, those that they gave to us. And, uh, their vision for the, for the rest is to be able to touch as many different programs within the Ag as possible with the, the facilities, and then also increase the ability of people, of kids to be involved in Ag, uh, make it more cost-efficient for those kids. I appreciated their vision within that and how this could lead to growth in the program and, um, access for more, um, young students.
Mr. Blocker's skill set is, he's been expert in swine areas. And so, uh, with this facility and the breeding and having pigs available for several kids to buy within the cost range of what they can afford, is just really, um, it's groundbreaking for the programs, I think. Uh, because, uh, we all know that some of that can get kind of expensive for families to be involved in. So again, you've got to have the right people in place to do the right things. And we're very fortunate to have those, the one I can see and the little background I have in it, that they, they know what to talk about. And, um, and they've done so much work. Um, I drive by there every day, and I hadn't looked much at it, but they've really cleaned all of the area. They've got those pads ready for those, this new building to go down. And then, uh, kudos again to the local business people that have given them a wonderful, it sounded like to me, a really good price on the barn.
Yeah, I think so.
So, uh, I just think I'm really glad that we, um, and that Mr. Argyle was in tune with them to, to listen, and that's good, that what they needed and where we can go. So anyway, thank you for including us in that that day so we could get, we could, we could share in the excitement, I think, more than anything, of where they're headed. So I, I encourage you to go sometimes just set a time and go visit with them and go look at what they're doing. Because it's, it was, it was exciting for them. Um, I don't know where we're at. I lost track of who's talking there.
Need a motion for agenda.
Item number four.
Will we approve items four point one and four point two as presented?
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Item number five, the superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll start first with resignations. Um, we have three resignations this month. The first is from Tiffy Bagwell. She's been a paraprofessional at Alba High School. Um, and you can reference her, uh, letter of resignation there. Um, we also have Megan Spray. Megan was our girls' basketball assistant these past two years. Um, and so she's going to go be a college student, and we're, we're happy. She's going to go do that. She's done a great job. Um, then we have Cannon Collins. Um, Cannon's going to be resigning her high school girls, cross-country and track. And so appreciating, uh, what Cannon's done for this district over the course of the last seven, eight years. Made a tremendous impact with our young people and young ladies. And so, uh, she's going to spend some more time with family, and we wish her the, the best doing that. For my communication, um, just want to remind the board about the School Association Region Meeting, which is April twenty-third in Laverne. If you'll let me know by April fifteenth, I can register you all and have transportation. And then, um, I'm going to give some of my time now to Harper Houston. Um, Harper is, and she's going to explain what this is. She's the OASC Vice President, um, for the state of Oklahoma. Uh, we are so proud of Harper, and you will see, um, her poise and, and, um, the way she carries herself in a few moments, you will, you will just get a glimpse of why we're so proud of her. But also want to thank Mr. Eckhart, Mrs. White, for their dedication to student council. We do a lot of great things with student council, um, and it starts with those two. And so we really appreciate your work, um, dedication, and time, uh, with our students. And so, with that being said, Harper, we'll let you come on up.
I don't really have a presentation. I'm just trying to kind of talk about all the little details I can remember. So, back in November, um, I was elected as the, like you said, the Oklahoma Association of Student Council's Vice President, which is such a long name, but basically it's the entire Association of Oklahoma, all the student councils that are in their high school, all basically connect. Um, I don't know if you guys have heard of the camp, uh, the Camp Basic. It's at Northwestern. They have it every summer. It is such a beneficial camp, and that's kind of what introduced me to this whole organization and what good, how amazing it is, and how many different people that you can meet that share the same interests and desires, basically. Um, so basically the process of me getting elected was, I had to kind of fill out like a sort of application. I had to get that, I, I really had to make up my mind early. I had to get that submitted by like August. And so I was, I was really committed by August. I was like, dang, I'm gonna do this. And so I, uh, I kind of submitted it. Um, and then I had to make a, kind of a video that they could send out on the website so that all members of the OASC could kind of see it, get a feel for who I am as a person, what we are as a school. Um, and Mr. Eckhart did a great job at editing that, and it looked really good. Um, and then after that, I had to write a speech and present it at state convention in November in front of fourteen hundred people, which was pretty daunting. And I'm not gonna lie, I was, I was pretty nervous, but once I got up there, I, I kind of got a feel for, you know, how to speak and how I felt up there. And it was, it was pretty cool. Um, it was such a great experience. Even if I, you know, ended up not getting elected, I was just like, that's something I can say I did. So I ended up getting elected. Um, and so, yeah, basically, there's a lot of different aspects that come with it. Uh, so a lot of it will take place this summer. So I will attend both basic camps as a state officer. Um, and so that basically means I just kind of work, I speak at the assemblies that they have through the whole week. Um, I take care of, uh, there's a couple of different things I do. I don't know all the different aspects yet, but...
She's looking at me because I'm the director of basic. Jason's an officer, so I just said, just hang with me, then he'll get her out.
Yeah, no, I kept looking at her at the meeting the other day. I was like, what am I gonna be doing this? And she's like, well, you'll see. Um, and so I have to go to both two weeks of that. And then I attend Nationals, which is in Amarillo.
Albuquerque.
Alba, Albuquerque, Mexico. I give my... And that's the national convention, so I'll get to meet people from all over across the country. Um, I'm pretty fortunate enough. I got to attend it last summer. Um, not as a state officer, though. And so this year will be really cool as a state officer, getting able to meet other state officers from different states and just being able to kind of see the variety of leaders that are there. It was, it was a really cool last year to see that. And so I will attend both of those weeks, and then I have Nationals, and then I get to go as a delegate to Advance, which is kind of like a building block off of Basic. So people only attend Advance when they attend Basic, and they learn more qualities about themselves. Um, but yeah, that's all pretty cool. And so, um, also, the last thing I'll talk about is, um, so as, whenever I got elected in my speech, I had to basically come up with a platform that I would like to stay in our association, um, that could, you know, improve it, do good. Um, and so me and Ms. White kind of brainstormed a little bit. It was pretty difficult to come up with, uh, something, you know, pretty big for this association that we could do. And we were kind of talking about it, and we were like, as a small school, you know, we don't really have much access to how these big, huge high schools run their student councils, basically. You know what I mean? We don't have a lot of resources and stuff like that. And so we kind of decided, what if we had like a half-day workshop where we bring in advisors who have done this for years and years and years? And students can choose the topic that they'd like to learn about. So it could be like philanthropy weeks, school spirit, um, pep rallies, stuff like that. Um, and advisors who are really kind of specialized in that topic can come in and talk about it. Students can brainstorm with other students. They can do activities. They can learn new, um, ideas on how to kind of put on different events and stuff like that. And so we're calling that the OASC Playbook, hosted by Alba, and we're kind of working with Fairview, who is the president, uh, president school. And so we're kind of working with them on how to basically put this together. And so I, we will be putting that on in April twenty, on April twenty-sixth. And so, yeah, that's basically it in a nutshell. But there's a lot of different aspects, but that's basically it. So, does anybody have any questions?
State convention next year.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. State convention next year, um, I, which will be in November, and it'll be at Bartlesville. We've already had a meeting about it, and I've met the other officers. Um, there's three of us, and it's been really cool. So we're going to have state convention in Bartlesville in November, and I will be kind of the host of it, basically. The three officers and us, which is kind of scary. Again, you know, I did a three-minute, five-minute speech last year at, uh, state, and I got to talk for basically a long time in front of these people. So, but I'm really excited about it. I get to plan a few different aspects of it, but that's really the secretaries thing. But, yeah, basically in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions?
I will say, I've had the privilege of getting to go to state convention, and you would be very proud of Ms. Harper and her speech. It was very evident to me, and I was just a tidbit biased, even though I had nothing, I don't get to vote. She, her mannerisms and her speaking ability were ten shoulders above the other candidates. And it was very evident who had worked and worked and prepared to give that speech. Didn't stumble, didn't get nervous, hammed like a trooper. The young lady from Fairview, which Northwest Oklahoma should be very proud. Very often, it's hard for small schools to compete against big schools just because of numbers of delegates they get to take and how many get to vote. And Bryn is, you know, is the president from Fairview. And I just had to laugh because I, because I know Bryn relatively, but I really know Harper. And they do get to work under me at the vote basic leadership. And they, they control the stage. I write a script, and they're up there, and they have to control everything that happens. We've all had assemblies when things don't go right, and you've got to very quickly solve the problem. But you, you would be very proud of it. How many members are in student council across the state? Mrs. White, do you, oh, there are...
Well, like I said, there were fourteen hundred there's.
And there's just limited on who can go to state convention because of how big the space is in which that's why the houses in Bartlesville, bigger high schools that have it, host it in motels and eat reasons.
I will say, she ran against five schools, and you have to win by majority.
Correct.
And there was no runoff. Like, she was hands down, like over sixty percent. So, she, yeah, she did a great job.
She did a great job. And she, they will, they don't know what they're doing for me, but they, they, they're on the stage, and I write a script, and, and they follow it because that's what they're expected to do when they go to any state convention, is there's a script, and they expect you to, you know, the video people are cued, the keynote speakers get cued by what you say. And so, uh, it's gonna be a great summer, and I'm really excited to work with. She's gonna do a great job. In the playbook, my gosh, you have thirty-two. There's quite a few different advisors they've asked across the state to come and, and share fifteen, twenty-minute breakouts. Is that about right? And so it'll actually be held at Dale City High School because they want the capacity to be able to bring in lots of kids. So, uh, I don't know, has Alba ever had a state officer with OASC? I believe so.
Not from the record, but according to the records.
Not that we can find. So congratulations. And I will, before I hush up and tell you, I want to thank her family because she comes out for the summer. You will see her long enough to wash clothes and send her on the road again because it is, it is busy. And I will tell every state officer parent, thank you, because they, they literally commit themselves to, to OASC in the summer. So, but it's quite a, quite a deal. And we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And you'll do great.
Thank you. We'll call it that, certainly.
Now it's your turn. Yeah. Now we'll move to Ms. Martini. Notice how I did that. I should have placed her.
Thanks a lot.
I'm not following her.
Yeah, I know. Mine is maybe not near as exciting. You know, maybe some it will be.
Yeah, it will be.
Some it will be. All right. So, um, my category for the strategic plan is curriculum and instruction, um, along with Hattie Potter. And so, you know, we, we just love sending out the emails that, okay, tell us what's going on in your building. And unfortunately, like I can read this all day, and I may not have a great understanding of what other buildings are doing. I know pretty well what's going on in mine. But as far as Washington goes...
You need to go to high school, can you?
Where's that slideshow on the top?
Have you guys, I haven't downloaded Team. Have you?
No.
Go to the left.
I haven't either. I, I had a conference call today on Team. It's Microsoft News.
Oh, right there.
It's kind of nice, like, nicely, uh, named, isn't it?
Golly, okay.
Okay. All right. So I'll let you go to the next one.
It's pretty popular now.
Okay, so if you remember, um, from the fall, um, none of our, none of our strategies have, have changed. So our areas don't change, but what we are doing in those areas, you know, change as the school year goes along. If you remember, um, we talked about the Hegarty Phoenemic Awareness Curriculum. now, and I'll kind of get into that in a little bit, but across the elementary, like, they are interested in possibly looking at this, you know, pre-K through fifth grade. Um, in February, they had early dismissal, and the topic that they presented at Washington was shifting towards structured literacy, and that is, you know, looking at your foundational skills, decoding and spelling, reading comprehension and written expression, so they watched a webinar on that, and they answered some questions, and that's what Washington's working on as far as, um, their instructional strategies go. Okay, excellent. Um, so, every single one of the elementaries have chosen the increased awareness of career pathways, so each one of them makes that look a little bit different in their buildings. Um, here at the, at Washington, um, they've had the speakers come in, they're working on this college and career awareness, if you click on that link, you can come up and see all the different, we hope it does, I think she shared it with you.
It's, it's all slotted here really nicely, thank you.
Okay. Well, that's okay, it's, we'll go back.
Man, why are we just... I don't know where I'm at now.
Sorry. PowerPoint has, I, I like PowerPoint because I can do a lot more things with it.
There we go.
Okay, all right. Anywho, so they are going to tour the VAP, and they are also having Ms. Tulsetine come in and, and present on her platform more than a diagnosis, and, um, they're gonna talk about how her dog helps her. So, currently, roadblocks to implementation, there are none, um, so then they have no plans to overcome those roadblocks, um, they completed all of their, or they will be finishing all of their action steps, and then, um, they want to adopt Hegarty site-wide with each class having materials, and that includes like the, the extra classes, um, where they work on, you know, just on reading, so those are things that they're gonna work on, okay? And then we have Longfellow. Um, again, this is the, the ICAP part of it, um, they're, you know, everybody's, you know, developing some kind of awareness, um, they are making plans to tour Northwest Technology Center in May, and students will explore college through various classroom activities in the month of May also. It's just getting them exposed, that's what we're going for, and to start thinking about, you know, what college could look like or should look like. Okay, the next one. All right, so they also chose the area of targeted interventions, so when we give MAPS tests, which we do three times a year, um, it's important for our teachers to go back and look at that data, and determine, you know, what areas are students struggling in, if there's something that a teacher didn't teach well, they go back and they, and they re-present that information, but, um, a, a lot of that, that's, that's what we do with our MAPS data. They do a lot of that in their PLC groups that they have, so when the second grade teachers get together, they're looking at the scores, like, you know, whose classroom did it work well in, whose classroom struggled a little bit, and then they can talk and figure out things that they did differently to address things with their kids. They also, uh, worked on vertical alignment, and that's determining, you know, before a, before a class group comes up to whatever school they're moving to, like, I may call Ms. Webster and be like, hey, you know, what, what are the areas that these students are struggling in? So, it's, it's the same type of thing, we wanna know areas that we may need to focus on when those students move up to us. So they're having those conversations, you know, throughout their building. January second, the in-service day, um, that's, they work on that vertical alignment, um, they looked at the gaps, and then next, the MAPS testing will take place in April for second grade and May for third grade. So, this is, it's kind of hard a little bit to, you know, we have put such an emphasis on state tests, and then we turn around and we do MAPS tests, too. We need the data, it's good for us, the MAPS data is great because we instantly have the scores, whereas state testing, we're waiting a little while, and it's kind of hard to go back and make sure that we're covering key concepts when we get it late. Okay, um, roadblocks, none, plan to overcome, none, action steps not accomplished, none, uh, the next steps, discussing the Hegarty across the elementary grade, uh, schools, that's what they're working on. Okay, we're linked in. Okay, their career pathway, um, students visited Northwestern, the nursing program to learn about, um, healthy lifestyle and to actually just be exposed to what the Northwestern students go through. Um, they are working to invite senior students from Northwestern and the tech center to share their career pathways with the students, so come into that. Roadblocks, implementation, there are none, there are no plans, you know, time is just, time's an issue for everybody, and that's probably their biggest issue. Okay, middle school. Um, I started talking about, um, these things that we were doing in the big, in the fall, um, we have continued, now almost all of my classes have prevented their writing across curriculum, if you'll click on that one for just a minute.
It's right here.
The one to the right, middle, yep. Let's see if that opens. Okay, so, these are some of the activities, this is the way that I'm trying to track what all of my teachers have done. So, we've had a couple classes that have gone together and designed a Gaga pit, so I don't know if you'll be able to click on that, but I'll show you pictures in just a minute what that looks like.
I don't have access.
Okay, I'll show you pictures on the next one, we back, back out of here. But, um, Mrs. Williams, Williams and Mr. Hamilton went together, and they essentially had the students research, um, things that they would like to have out on the outside, out on the playgrounds, or the yard, as I sometimes like to call it, so...
The yard.
So, anyway, the kids were super interested in, in the Gaga pit, and it's, you'll see, it's like this big thing, and there's balls in it, and there's a specific game that goes with it, and they, they decided they wanted to see what would it cost to build that, you know, so the math team looked up the cost of the, of the materials, and they did, so they put a whole project together between their math class and their writing classes to come up with that, that's one thing. Um, let's see, Las Vegas probability, I thought that was kind of neat, uh, Mrs. Whiteley looked at that, you know, what are the odds that you're gonna win when you go to Vegas? So she, she, you know, they had to do a, a project about that.
Wow.
Yep, sorry. I'll show pictures in just a second, I'll make him click on that.
Hello.
Okay, don't click on anymore. So, Shark Tank, I, I do have examples of this, Shark Tank in Mrs. Thomas's class, they had to create a product that they wanted to try to sell, and so they, they did a PowerPoint presentation, or it could be slides, because that's a little bit easier to navigate sometimes, um, that, that they thought would be helpful to other people, and so I have an example of that. We also have, um, the slingshot challenge. Now, the slingshot, slingshot challenge, um, is, is pretty interesting because we had some winners in the slingshot challenge, so I wanna talk about that for just a minute. Um, in the slingshot challenge, let me find my notes, because I've misplaced it, um, this is a global video challenge where students thirteen through eighteen years old can voice their ideas about the future of conservation work, and the Oklahoma competition was hosted by the Oklahoma Alliance for Geographic Education located within the University of Oklahoma, and Alba Middle School students Isaac Antone, Chance Argo, Samuel Newton, and Dice Malone placed first, and that's super exciting for us, um, so they did a, their slingshot, slingshot challenge, um, was mobile market of Northwest Oklahoma. So they had to go through, and they, they did all kinds of research, um, and then they had to put together a presentation, and they actually submitted it, and, and they were winners. Um, we also, so they will receive four hundred dollars, um, for their, for funding for their mobile market. Um, we, we submitted as many videos as we could, because we, you know, we love to see, you know, kids win these kinds of things. Four additional videos that were created by Alba Middle School were selected for honorable mention prizes, and, um, the videos, um, it's, it's, like I said, it's a global competition, so it's not just an Oklahoma thing, and last year we had winners of this project, too, so we're pretty excited about it. Um, they will receive their recognition on May eighth, and, um, the proud teachers are, uh, Mrs. Whipple and Mrs. Williams, so if you, hopefully you've seen that advertised on Facebook a little bit, so if you'll go back to my slideshow. Okay, writing across subject examples. Okay, so this is what a Gaga pit looks like.
It can get rough.
Now, well, I know, so, so our advice is, we need to have a teacher out there at all times. I will say, Student Council has purchased a mobile Gaga pit, so after all of this, it's been purchased, we're waiting for it to come in, wish us luck, we, we hope that it goes well. So, that's that one, we'll go back. Okay, click on this one for me, this was a, I thought it was an interesting, this was one of our Shark Tank, um, presentations, um, he wanted to focus on something, you know, having a, a case that has, for your cell phone, that has a built-in charger in case you forget to charge your phone, so he goes through, answers some questions, why is it needing, needed, who's gonna use it, so they did a, they did a great job of presenting those, so, that was pretty, the buddy case, that's what, that's what he was going for. Okay?
But there's a secret cord in it that you can pull up and drop, okay, good. Secret cords, that's good.
Yeah, okay, and push on this for me. And see if you can hit play on that, hopefully it will play.
We didn't want to see it anyway.
Well, you don't have to show it if you, if you don't want to, but I think you guys can go back, well, not if you don't want to, but I mean, you know what I mean.
We want to. Try harder.
Technology may not allow us to.
They may not.
It'll take a beyond school day, you know.
Yeah.
I will go ahead and keep talking while he's working on that. Um, in the fall, I also presented on engagement strategies, that's where the teachers took the K-twenty engagement strategies. If you remember, I talked about the snowball fight that, that we were gonna have, you know, that's where my teachers come in and they are presenting during my faculty meetings and going through different kinds of engagement strategies. So, since then, we've had reading that has presented on ABC graffiti, ELA did the five W cube, which is a cube, and you essentially throw it at a kid, well, not at a kid, towards a child, and then, um, when it, you know, lands, it, it comes up with one of the five Ws. So, in their, you know, whatever they've read, you know, who, who wrote it, you know, who are the characters, you can ask all kinds of questions based on, on that. Science presented about the importance of an anticipation guide, um, that helps when they go through and they're, they're working on their notes and different things like that. Um, we didn't, that's okay, that's okay, we didn't have any roadblocks, nothing to overcome. Um, next steps is just finishing all of the cross, uh, cross subjects for core content, and then through, um, uh, through our PD and observations, we're, we're checking on to make sure that people are utilizing the engagement strategies. Okay, then we go on to the high school. Um, you know, they have been working feverishly on ICLE, making sure that, um, you know, the ELA and the math teachers are, you know, being taught, you know, and the curriculum, looking at all the standards, making sure that they're prioritizing the standards, coming up with common formative assessments, it's all the same thing that the middle school went together, now, you know, we should have some, some great alignment between the middle school and high school, and so it's, it's kind of an ongoing process, it takes a while. Um, you know, it, it takes a lot of time to present, you know, not only how you do certain things, but why, and how it impacts your classroom. Um, by having these, you know, meetings, some of them are in person, some of them are online, um, we get a, a better buy-in from our teachers to implement these things, and so, um, that has been their primary focus on the research-based instruct, uh, instructional strategies, and that will continue, you know, throughout the, the school year, so. Not near as good as Harper's, but there we go.
Very good, very informative, very good. Any questions for Ms. Martini? That was really good.
That is very good.
Thank you. You're welcome.
It's fun to see all the fun things.
It is.
You know, my vocabulary, I'm making it work. It's fun, you see all the fun things.
Almost there.
A long day. That's really good. Can we, can we watch it there?
Okay, uh, D's. Work inside, Jewish place, uh, trash chest. Save it.
That's very good, thank you, Ms. Martini, for sharing.
action, vote to approve summer driver's education with instructor Hannah Albrecht for session one, May twenty-eighth through thirty-first, and June third, and session two, June seventeenth through twenty-first, with a two million dollar fee to be charged per student.
Okay, it's a pretty routine agenda item here, um, thank you to Dr. Nicewater for getting these dates set up, um, and also Ms. Albrecht for her willingness to teach this, um, we are not increasing the cost of this, we did two years ago, we increased it fifteen dollars, but we are not, um, doing any increase, um, for these classes, this is a really good thing for our students, um, to be able to do. I might also add that, um, I believe Ms. Albrecht and Mr. Bieber are also doing some extra certification to be able to give the driver's test, um, which will be allowed through DPS now, and so really appreciate both of them being willing to do that also. Um, so, any other questions, I would recommend approval of the agenda item six point one.
How many kids can they take per session?
So you have fifteen students per session, they have to do thirty hours of class time, um, and six hours of drive time.
Okay.
I move we, uh, we approve item, uh, six point one. Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Six point two, discussion with possible board action, vote to enter into a win-win negotiation with the Alba Educational Association, the AEA, and the Alba Board of Education for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So again, this is just a routine requirement that we do each year in April, um, we receive a letter from the AEA president, which is Mrs. Albrecht, to enter into those win-win negotiate, negotiated items, so I would recommend approval of agenda item six point two.
Make a motion, we approve six point two.
Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Item six point three, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following out-of-state travel request. Six point three point one, Longfellow second graders will be traveling to the Exploration Place in Wichita, Kansas on May seventeenth. Six point three point two, Longfellow third grade, that was second grade, third grade, will be traveling to the Central County Zoo in Wichita, Kansas on May the tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so if you will, um, you see attached to each one of those is the request, um, approved by Mrs. Tucker, and so this would be a great opportunity for our students to field trip this year, um, we asked for board permission because they're traveling out of state, and so I would recommend approval of agenda item six point three point one and six point three point two. Make a motion, we approve item six point three point one and six point three point two, that's approved. A second.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Item six point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following Alba School District twenty twenty-four summer camps. Six point four point one, Alba School District summer camps, is that just in general?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and six... And six point four point two, Alva FFA, the greatest livestock judging camp ever.
Okay, so if you'll open up agenda, or you all open up the first attachment to agenda item six point four point one, let's see all the summer camps. Um, this again is a routine agenda item that we do each year. Um, so, there is our form for that, um, in the registration. And then agenda item six point four point two, the greatest livestock judging camp ever. Um, there's actually been a ten dollar increase in the cost of that camp. Um, last year it was sixty-five dollars per individual. Um, that camp was really good. We had numerous outside schools that came. And again, talked about it with the purchase of the Hawk Barn, but Mr. Walker and Mr. Lloyd, um, are doing a really great job of growing that program and of student involvement. And so, this is just one, one piece to that puzzle. So, I would recommend, uh, approval of agenda item six point four point one and six point four point two. I move that we approve items six point four point one and six point four point two.
Second.
Singleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes. We have like summer pride in addition to that.
It's actually listed on there. That, that camp forms for second through sixth grade. The complexity of what takes place in middle school and high school will, will bring that most likely to the main meeting because there's so many dates that fluctuate with, you know, coaches changing and that type of thing. So, we want to bring you a separate flyer for the middle school and high school because summer pride is June for the younger kids. We go June and July for middle school through-
And you said it's listed here?
Yeah, it's actually on that. That's very first call.
Well, that's interesting. Well, it's just one month. Okay, so is, that's the small children?
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, that's elementary. Because middle school and high school will be, you know, they'll be meeting with their coaches, there'll be some requirements, some expectations, it'll just be a little bit different.
Will we approve it?
We wanted to get this, uh-huh, that'll be in there. We just want to get this out for our, our families that'll be participating in that.
So, that, that is the summer pride word there.
So, yeah, when you call it summer pride, summer strength conditioning, some people are unfamiliar with pride and some people are familiar with strength conditioning. So, we just term, changed the terminology because you really can't mess up the strength conditioning.
You can't. Pride means different things.
Right, yeah. So, we just, we just switch it a little.
Mean different to different.
I just think we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we'll bring in more in May. There's just a lot more to come.
Okay, that was just new terminology.
That's right. Clarification, always ask.
Yeah. I don't have my readers, I couldn't see.
Well, I think that's okay. One more. Do we, we do not have any business?
No.
And we're going to sign documents in seconds? And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. We adjourned.